Meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall is absent. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
And other staff members we have attending the meeting are City Manager Donna Viero, City Attorney Frederick Raffetto, and Assistant City Manager Mike Manzella. We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melody, could you take a roll call? I know you took it when we went into executive, but I think it would be helpful to do another roll call now.
Absolutely, and I can't believe I didn't do that. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall is absent. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
You did do it, here again.
I thought I did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. I thought... We are on to the announcement, the Open Public Meetings Act. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to special events applications.
Hold on, I'm just trying to get Leisha on here. Can you hear me? I'm here. Go ahead. Can you hear? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is from Kids. One mic, one soul, open mic, Springwood Park on October 17. Next would be a combined event. The Police Department and the Recreation Department would be doing a community event that would replace National Night Out and Trunk or Treat. And just so everyone is aware, this would be a low-key, scaled-down event, no stage, no music, just giving out prepared bags, and individuals will be encouraged to leave. Asbury Park Healing Together, October 15, in Springwood Park, from 1 to 4. The Asbury Park Polar Bear Races would take place on the Boardwalk on December 27. The next are two weddings, October 31 and October 17. And next is the AP Jack-o'-lantern Trail, sponsored by the Business Committee, would take place in Kennedy Park on October 30. And next is the Blue Claws Baseball Event on October 21. And last is the inaugural Asbury Park Dyke March, which happened on October 11. Are there any questions on the application? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to matters from City Council.
Hi, it's Irene Chapman. I just wanted to remind everyone that the city is sponsoring the free ride for Asbury Park residents to medical appointments and for grocery shopping. This free ride is available Monday through Friday. You have to be 18 or over, and masks must be worn. The phone number to call is (201) 939-4242. Also, the Deal Lake Commission is having a cleanup on 10/31 at 9:00 a.m., a meeting at the boat ramp, Seventh Avenue and Main Street. And Sunset Lake is having a cleanup on the same day at 10:00 a.m., and people will be meeting at Bond Street and Fifth. Finally, the Halloween Walk and Drive-Thru Event that Leisha just referred to, a partnership between the Police Department and the Rec Department, is on Halloween from 1 to 3 in the City Hall parking lot. There will be prepared bags for children. Parents must accompany the children, and masks must be worn. That's it for me.
Councilmember Clayton?
This Saturday, October 17, there is a breast cancer awareness walk in Kennedy Park between the hours of 10 and 12. They're asking everyone to please wear a face mask and comfortable walking attire, and everybody who registers will receive a gift. And you can register by going to HackensackMeridianHealth.org/events, or call 1-800-560-9990. And on the following Saturday, October 24, between the hours of 10 and 2, there is a prescription give-back. So if you have old prescriptions at home or things that you're no longer using, please don't put them down in our water. Bring them to City Hall and drop them off, and they will be disposed of properly. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mayor Moore?
I lost it at someplace here. We're also doing a thing at City Hall as far as you can take your paper down and be shredded, so if somebody can get us that date, we'll get it out. I know it's coming up. And then Yvonne announced the Mayor's Wellness Saturday at Kennedy Park. And besides that, I just asked everybody to keep on wearing their masks and everybody to keep on being safe. Thank you.
Mayor, the paper-shutting event is Saturday, October 24, from 8:00 a.m. to noon.
Thank you, Michael.
You're on to matters from the City Manager.
Melody, I have nothing. I know that you have a statement you'd like to make regarding the election process. Go ahead.
Thank you. I know there are a lot of questions regarding the upcoming election. This is a new election to everyone. The first question I'm getting a lot of is, what do I do if I do not receive my ballot or if I misplace or damage my ballot? You can contact the County Clerk's Election Office at (732) 431-7790. And the other question that we're getting a lot of is, can I still vote at the polls on Election Day? Yes, you can, but only voters requiring an ADA accessible voting device will be permitted to vote on a machine. All other voters must vote by paper provisional ballots, which will be provided at the polling locations. Otherwise, you can drop off your completed mail-in ballot at the polling location. And if there are anyone who has any questions regarding this upcoming election, please feel free to contact my office at (732) 502-5718, and I will gladly assist you the best that I can. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody.
Matters from the City Attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
We're on to the public partition, public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open? I'm sorry.
I think we missed a workshop presentation, Melody.
We did. Sorry. Where... How did we get that far?
I had out the screen.
Yeah. We are on to presentations, and for some reason, items to be presented by Michelle Alonzo, Director of Planning and Redevelopment.
Hold on, just I'm meeting her. Go ahead, Michelle.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Councilmembers and members of the public. Tonight, I'm presenting on a requested amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan by Sacman Enterprises. The requister is asking for amendment to build a multi-story building at 510 Main Street, otherwise known as 700 Monroe. The screen you see before you is a rendering of the proposed building that was also presented to the municipal council about nine months ago. Okay, next slide. This is a photo of the location. It has a narrow frontage on Main Street, and it will go down Monroe up until the White House you see in the photo. Next slide. So currently, part of the lot, the lot that fronts Main Street, is in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. The rest of the site is not. The request is to have the entire site in the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, and there's a further request for an increase in the permitted height. Next slide. We would achieve putting the rest of it on the redevelopment plan by using our powers of an area need of rehabilitation. So the language that you see before you on the screen would be added to the plan where we would add Block 2503, lots 2 to 6, as part of an area need of rehabilitation, and it would be included in the redevelopment plan as such. Next slide. This is some background about the proposed project. The applicant is asking for 60 units with 20% as affordable for a total of 12 units. It will follow the newly adopted City Affordable Housing Ordinance with a mix of units from one-bedroom to three-bedroom and be deed restricted for 30 years. This project will also have 4,689 square feet of retail or commercial space fronting Main Street and wrapping around a portion of Monroe. And this project will have a parking garage at the rear of the property, and it will also be underground and be able to accommodate 54 parking spaces. The applicant is seeking an additional story than what is permitted in the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan permits four stories in a penthouse. This project is proposed to have five stories in a penthouse. So the language I'm proposing to the plan would give new regulations specifically for this site only. The site would be permitted a height of five stories at 60 feet with an additional penthouse of 12 feet. I also am adding the requirement that large expanses of blank walls shall feature murals to be approved by the Municipal Public Art Commission. And that's it for my presentation. If the council so desires, the next step would be a resolution referring this amendment to the Planning Board. Are there any questions of the municipal council?
I don't think I have any questions. Michelle, do you know how many stories the YMCA is?
If we go to the photo, we can see it there. So it's...
So it's like four stories?
Yeah. Looks like four.
It's four. But it's the first floor is a larger-than-average first floor for that building.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, more, just a couple of quick ones. On the package sent out to us, it says on page, description of proposed plan amendment, it says 57 parking spots. Now you're saying 54, so it's a 54 or 57.
I believe it's 54, but what was included in the package was the project that was presented nine months ago as reference. That is not the current project. The current project... Mike, would you go to slide? This one. It's six, now it's 60 units. So what you have before you as a conceptual is a little different because they have continued to refine the project. But I had included for the council the conceptual so you could remember what project we're talking about, because there's been a large amount of time since this was before you.
Okay, so... Hold on a second. So how many parking spots are required? You got .09 from the old one, so this is .08 something, so how many?
It's .9 with the affordable units not requiring parking.
Okay, and this, why, I think, I'm all confused, because all the new, it was delineated on, so, and there's no page numbers, but it says Main Street, Page 5, and then goes Page 6, and they want a five-year tax abatement. Why would we give a five-year tax abatement?
No, there's no request for a five-year tax abatement.
I've got it in red.
No, that's language to be added to the plan that is standard language about an area need of rehabilitation. This municipal council didn't reauthorize five-year tax abatements.
I know that. That's why I was concerned that this was in red as something new.
No, that's language describing an area need of rehabilitation.
So can we just delete anything that isn't, like, germane to this project? And send it to us again?
Yes.
Thanks. No other questions?
Are there any other questions from council?
Nope.
Okay. Sorry, I apologize for getting us off track, but we are now on to public participation. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it. Clayton?
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Members of the public may participate by dialing *9 on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you reach one minute remaining. I am calling upon 3350. 3350, please state your name and address for the record. *6 to unmute.
Yeah. I don't know how, I didn't raise my hand yet, but you called me, so I'll go with it. Ernest Magnoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Number one, I'd like to say that there's been some controversy, that it's been in the meetings.
Start the clock, please. Somebody start the clock.
Has it started? I don't know how you guys do this. What a mess. You want to put me back in the wait?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You want to go back?
Yeah.
All right. We'll start over. All right. I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Raise them. You know...
Is anyone else?
Melody, go ahead.
Well, wait a minute. Can you still hear me? Are you telling me this is a council meeting, and no one's got their hands raised for public?
There we go. Something's wrong here.
Melody, I am seeing some hands raised.
Okay, now I do. Now I do.
Okay. Okay. Melody, why don't you start again with Mr. Magnoli?
Okay.
Start the clock and start the public again.
All righty. All right, I'm calling on 3350.
Okay. Ernest Magnoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Number one, I'd like to say that over the course of the past few meetings, I brought up some issues relative to Councilman Kendall, and I've received, like, a lot of threats and character assassinations. But one thing's for sure, I have court documents that he was in fact fired from the Asbury School System. It involved children, it involved brutality. He appealed it, he lost the appeal, he lost his phys ed license. There's other things that have happened. Something about the 20th February of this year, he may have been accused of hitting a kid in school with a clipboard. The investigation seems to have evaporated, but I filed an Oprah, and there was a police report, and there's an investigation. Now, here's where I find a problem. Mr. Kendall somehow, over the airwaves here, is allowed to say, "Oh, City Manager, oh, City Attorney, this guy's a liar, he's this and that." Okay? I'm not a liar, and if you want, I'll send you all the documents. I've already given you all these court documents about Kendall. I don't know why we have to go. I physically handed them to you at a meeting of all this stuff about him being fired, his hearings, the judges said that he shouldn't be near children. Why he's allowed to go around starting trouble and have people assault me, saying that I'm a liar, I don't know. He's hooked up with this super at my building, a Keith Burell. I get threats all the time. I got Lester Reeve coming up punching me in the back when I'm eating. I got the cops coming to my house with knives and guns. You know, it's out of control. Let me move on. Zoning, Mr. Lewis, I think his name is Daniel Lewis, I think he's on the zoning board. The last meeting, you allowed this individual, who's on the zoning board, to get on during something, we were talking about the sewer, and he gets on and starts, in my opinion, a veiled threat against a previous speaker who mentioned that, who had the permit to put signs up, whatever kind of signs, and fix them with DPW on the wall in Springwood Park. And he may say, "It's me, you tell that woman." Well, let me tell you something, Mr. Lewis, you need to stop threatening people. Let me move on. Crime in Asbury Park Police, lawsuits, Attorney General investigations, internal affairs complaints being denied, pleading guilty to felonies, like against me, and yet, they're still retaliating, and you keep denying, letting the public have the Attorney General come back and have another, another meeting about how problematic this Asbury Park Police Department is. Crime in... Okay. You keep denying that there's no, we're not rated the second most dangerous place in the state, FBI, UCR. That's not...
Time's up. I'm now calling upon 6412. Please state your name and address for the record. *6 to unmute yourself. Do you want me to move on to a different number?
What number was that?
Okay.
54... 5412, is that me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rita.
I think that's Rita. Hi. I want to, I also have a complaint. It's a little different, though. The attorney at the last meeting said he was going to send me a letter about the sign that's in the park, in Springwood Park, and when he read the ordinance for the sign, he only read the first line in the ordinance that says, "The council has to approve," but there were two more lines, and they were that you have to have a permit, and they can't be political. Why can't we get one straight story? And I know the city employees put it up, and it's still up, and it got adjusted, I think, yesterday. I don't think that, you know, you pass ordinances, there's an ordinance for signs, and you break every one of them. You broke that one, you broke the one about the Me Too Parade on the Boardwalk, and they still owe us, what, $30,000? I mean, like, why do we have ordinances if you're not going to abide by them? I don't know if they call that malfeasance in office, but it certainly borders on it that you people are not abiding by the rules that you set. The only ones that have to follow the rules is us, taxpayers. And I think it's very unfair. And Fred, I'm mad at you because you did not send me a letter explaining anything. You said you were at the meeting, and you didn't do it. Why? I don't think that's fair. I've been a taxpayer since 1967. That's a very long time, and you all know that. And I think I deserve better treatment than that, because I only, anytime I complain, I complain about things for everybody, not just for myself. When you have ordinances, I don't know how many ordinances you broke, I never investigated, but you're always breaking them. So why form an ordinance? Why write an ordinance? We have to pay Fred to write it to begin with, and I don't think it's fair. I really don't. Now, if anybody has an explanation about Black Lives Matter, I'd like to hear it.
Rita, you have 41 seconds left.
Is it not a political sign? And why haven't we collected the money that was owed us by the Me Too organization that, I don't know, you don't hear about them anymore? There's a woman running now to be in Superior Court. They don't seem to be protecting her. They only protect certain women, I guess. So I'd like an explanation of why that sign is still up, and why did the employees put it up? That's what I want to know. I don't think employees should be involved in any of this stuff. It puts them in a bad light.
Time's up.
I can respond. This is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney. And Rita, I do apologize for not getting something out to you earlier after the last council meeting, but I was going over my notes in preparation for tonight's council meeting, and I did in fact realize that I hadn't sent you a written explanation of what I said on the record at the last council meeting. So I did send you an email, actually, last night with the analysis that I had read into the record at the last council meeting. It was not a letter that was sent to you by regular mail, but it was an email. So you may not have seen that just yet, but it is in your inbox from last night. I'm happy to talk to you about it further at your convenience.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling upon 6412. 6412, please state your name and address for the record. *6.
Hi, Juliandriola. Juliandriola, 521 Cookman Avenue. Can you hear me this time?
Yes, I can this time. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. I just wanted to say hi from Asbury Park Dinner Table. We are really excited to be launching again next week on Wednesday. We will be serving three days a week, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, at our, at the locations we were at previously, with the exception of the Boys and Girls Club. So that will be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 5:30 to 6:30, at Second Baptist Church, St. Stephen AME Zion Church, and United Fellowship Baptist Church. We are also extremely excited to be able to provide additional distribution points on those days at Comstock Court, Robinson Towers, and Charles Lumley Homes. Those distribution points will be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 4:30 p.m., and that will begin the following week. That is made possible by a partnership with Interface Neighbors and Asbury Park Housing Authority Community. The program, you know, if you were participating before, it was running seven days a week before. That is no longer the case. It will be three days a week. Any questions about picking up meals or anything like that, feel free to email us, asburyparkdinnertable@gmail.com, or find us on Facebook and Instagram. Just search either one of those for Asbury Park Dinner Table. On the other side of it, I guess if anyone is aware of any additional funding sources that we could call upon or grant anyone is aware of, please let us know. We are actively seeking funding to make the program available for as long as possible to help our community out. Last thing, the event that was mentioned earlier...
One minute remaining.
Sure, thank you. The jack-o'-lantern, oh, I know, okay, never mind. I know that that was mentioned earlier, and I wasn't clear on the status of it. So that's everything I have. Thank everybody, thanks everybody so much for your support. We will... Um, we will, uh, we're here for any questions, anything you need, reach out to us via email or on social media. Thanks so much, that's all I got.
Thank you for all you do.
Not seeing any, not seeing any more hands raised, do I have a motion to end the public participation portion?
Move to close, Melody, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public. We are now on to minutes. I have the Municipal Council Executive Meeting minutes of September 23rd, and the Municipal Council Regular Meeting minutes of September 23rd. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept, Amy Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda resolutions. We have 2022-94, a resolution approving special events application, and 2022-95, a resolution amending the meeting parking requirements in the city for November 2020 and December of 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 2020-96, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to Resolution 2020-97, a resolution establishing standard procedures and requirements for public comments made during remote meetings of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to Resolution 2020-98, a resolution authorizing the purchase of trash cans. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-99, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Monmouth County Open Space Grants Program for improvements to Sunset Lake Park and Springwood Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-300, a resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communication Groups for Fiber Extension. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Clayton.
Okay.
We'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2020-301, a resolution authorizing a contract for the disposal of brush, stumps, and wood chips. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Quinn, move it. Uh, Quinn, second.
Okay, we'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-302, a resolution awarding a contract for design, contract administration, and inspection services for Bond Street. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2020-303, a resolution awarding a contract for design, contract, administration, and inspection services for Memorial Drive. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
We'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-304, a resolution authorizing a contract for the disposal of leaves during the fall season. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Moore.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-305, a resolution rescinding the award of the contract, of, of a contract to Nicholas Enterprise LLC for the installation of a new sidewalk, pavers, and stone in St. John Island Park, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Chapman.
Thanks.
Roll call. We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-306, a resolution awarding a contract to Tino's General Construction LLC for the installation of new sidewalk, pavers, and stone in St. John Island Park, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
What number is this?
Uh, 2020-306?
Hold on one second, please.
Sure.
I have no problem with, I just, hmm, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. 2023, we're now on to 2020-307, a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Township of Neptune regarding the condition assessment and maintenance recommendations for the two Wesley Lake bridges. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2020-308, a resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to the city's community development block grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2019. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Do I have a second?
Quinn, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-309, a resolution approving the 2020-2021 liquor license renewal for license number 130333-013001, Monmouth Lodge Number 122. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-310, a resolution to approve a person-to-person and place-to-place liquor license transfer from Six Gear LLC to 614 Liquor License LLC. Are there any questions or comments before we move on? Not hearing, do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Quinn, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-311, a resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protective equipment with community development block grant, CDBG funding through the CARES Act. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Moore.
We're on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-312, a resolution amending Resolution Number 2020-274 relating to the Equity Committee and appointing members to the Equity Committee. Um, would you like me to, well, let's do the, do I have a motion?
Motion, Quinn, move it.
Do I have a second?
Chapman, second.
Okay, uh, do you want me to, are there any questions or comments? Do you want me to read the names or take roll call first, or take the vote first?
Read the names.
Read the names.
All right. The members of the Equity, Equity Committee are Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Councilmember Yvonne Clayton, Donna Viero, city manager or her designee, Deputy Police Chief Guy Thompson, Sergeant Stephen Ramsure, Reverend Jason Jennings, James Souter, Diane Shelton, Paul Weinstein, Elaine Roche, Daniel Harris, Dom, and alternate number one, Dominic Fasson, and alternate number two, John Kaplow.
So, uh, and just a quick correction, Dominique.
Oh, Dominique, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries, no worries.
All right. We'll move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Can I make one just clarification before you end the meeting related to that? Uh, our attorney, Fred Raffetto, while not a member, will be at the meetings as well.
Thank you for that. Uh, we are on to adjournment. Are there any questions or comments from council before we move to adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.